Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. And this is the last regular scheduled meeting of the year 2023. So before we get started tonight, we have a special pleasure. I think Chief has somebody, or two individuals he'd like to introduce. Chief, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Again, it's a privilege to be here this evening to introduce to you our two newest officers that took their oath of office back on December the 4th. But it's been a busy week with everything going on, and we were able to get them in here this evening. So I'd like to introduce to you Officer Travis Solers and Officer Olivia Zilar. Travis is a 2017 graduate of Wright State University. He has a bachelor's degree in physics. He was hired as a police recruit by our agency, by the city, in June of 2023, where he went to the Sinclair Criminal Justice Academy, where he achieved academic excellence. And he received his Ohio Basic Peace Officer Certification when he graduated on November the 16th from the academy. Prior to coming to us, Travis was employed as an electronics engineer with Stanley Electric in London, Ohio. He's excelled at that career. However, he didn't find it particularly fulfilling, and he said in his application process, he has felt called to a greater sense of purpose through police work and working here with our community. And then I'd like to introduce to you Officer Olivia Zilar. She came to us by way of the Ohio Office of Law Enforcement Recruitment and Ohio Department of Criminal Justice Services College to Law Enforcement Pathway Program that paired criminal justice agencies with local universities and partnering law enforcement agencies to help prepare them for a law enforcement career. She's one of our agencies participating in this program. We are, and she's our second person we've got from this program through Cedarville University. She is from Caldwell, Ohio, and graduated from Zane State College in May of '21 with an Associate Applied Science degree and from Cedarville University in May of 2023 with a Bachelor's of Arts degree in criminal justice. And along with Travis, they both again graduated from the academy on November the 16th, and they will be entering into our training phase of the Field Training Officer Program, and they're doing that right now and will be probably out on their own here in about 12, 14 weeks or so. So I'd like to allow Officer Solers and Officer Zilar have a few comments.
Good Travis.
It's nice to meet you all. Thanks for having us.
You need to go to the mic, please, just so it's being recorded.
Test, okay. It's nice to meet you all. Thanks for having us. I grew up in Washington Courthouse, Ohio, about, you know, 45 minutes, an hour away. I was introduced to the Beaver Creek area when I went to school at Wright State University. My wife and I ended up liking it so much, we decided to stay. So for the past eight, nine years, we've lived in the Beaver Creek-Fairborn area, which was what led me to the decision to apply to the Beaver Creek Police Department. So I'm very excited, looking forward to having a great career here. And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I just want to say thank you as well to everyone here. As Chief mentioned, I went to Cedarville University. During my senior year, I was able to intern with the department, and I really enjoyed and loved getting to know the community. And so I continued on and applied and then went through the academy. So I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity, and I'm very excited to be able to serve the city.
Thank you, and welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything?
I would like to say, Officer Zilar, I came from Pleasant City, Ohio, and graduated from Shenandoah. And so, and my sister is in the back, and she's also a Shenandoah graduate and is from Caldwell. So welcome to Beaver Creek. We are so happy to have you, and welcome to you as well. Thank you.
Okay, we will get started with the, and have a roll call to start, please.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doerr.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia. Mayor Stone.
Here. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to excuse Vice Mayor Garcia.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Vice Mayor Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And ladies and gentlemen, if you can stay, remain standing for a minute. We're entering into the holiday season, and we'll all be going our different directions and busy, busy, busy. So I just want to say, think twice as you move around this community and this country and stay safe. Always take that extra little thought to make sure you're safe. And in addition to that, I want to wish this council the best over the next four years. I will be leaving as of tonight, and it's been a pleasure. It's eight years, and I couldn't have asked for a better group of council members, so I want to wish them the best. And with that, I'm done. Sit down, please. All right, you have an agenda before us. Any changes?
Move to approve the agenda, your honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two sets of minutes to look at tonight. First is November 15th, which is a budget work session. Any changes?
Move to approve the November 15th budget work session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the November 15th budget work session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Next, we have the November 20th budget workshop, budget work session minutes. Any changes?
Move to approve the November 20th budget work session minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the November 20th budget work session minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion does carry. Thank you. Hmm? Abstention.
That's Zane, your honor.
Oh, I'm sorry. You had a good reason to be gone, too, and so I shouldn't have forgotten that one. All right. State of the City Budget. That is going to be covered by our city manager, Mr. Pete Landrum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Council. You should have before you a copy of the presentation, but also you should have a budget book that is with you, 2024 Municipal Budget. You should have a copy of that, and you should have already had received from the budget work session, which went unchanged, the five-year capital plan. And I'll state it later on, but all this will be available online tomorrow for everybody. Okay, so tonight, I'm going to start right off with this. This is a state that is provided annually to update citizens on the fiscal accountability and operations and capital accomplishments of the city. Tonight, you will be presented the upcoming budget, which will include two different legal legislative transactions: Resolution 2358, which is accepting the 2024 budget, and then Ordinance 2336, which is the actual budget appropriations. Near future plans of the city improvements to maintain and enhance a facility of service delivery. There'll be a report on finances, administrative activities, and inventory of properties, all part of the reporting requirements of the city charter. So jumping right into this, the 2024 Municipal Budget will cover January 1st through December 31st, so a calendar year. Municipal Budget and Five-Year Capital Plan will be available, as I said, on the website, line item by line item detail, as if you listen to the, or were here during the budget work sessions. It's kind of the same detail. So the city budget process, you know, there's a lot of time and effort that went into this. Really, the budget process starts now. We start talking about 2025 already, but for a lot of it, it starts mid-year in July at our council management strategy sessions. But, you know, a lot of has went into this on staff of creative solutions, shared resources, technology upgrades, efficiencies, improvements, and of course, as always, the Beaver Creek Way is pursuing grant opportunities aggressively. Staff worked hard to secure a strong financial position while maintaining city council's policy objective of maintaining the minimum fund balance of 20% for all operating funds and building goals and objectives to meet city council's strategic priorities, which two years ago, those were created at the July work session, council strategy work session. We did add a new one, which we'll get to. And of course, public budget work sessions were conducted on November 15th and 20th by staff and city council, very successful, always a good time to have, to hear council's comments. So just as a high-level executive summary, again, at the work session, we went line item by line item. We're not going to do that. That took us two nights to do that, so this will be a very high level. This first is a picture of the revenue and expenditures of the major funds and millions. What I wanted to highlight here is, on the right-hand side, is the percentage should at least be 20% for the operating funds. Some of those do not have, like the .36, that's a capital fund, the 1.2, that's another capital fund. So those are not operating funds. And a golf course is the enterprise fund, so that's at zero, as far as that goes. But so we met the objective that all funds are, that are operating in nature, have salaries and ongoing operating costs of 20% fund balance. I want to talk about first, revenue, 48.05 million. I want to stress this, that the largest, which is property taxes, is sitting at 61.6%. You know, we're approaching $30 million in property taxes as our primary resource. There are cities that only have this as 5% because they have income tax. So that, this is our primary revenue source. Property taxes, as we said, account for 61.6% revenue. The amount, percentage increased with the passage of the 1.8 mil police levy. So that's a brand-new levy that goes into effect in 2024, that was voted on in 2023. The city's other voted levies remain relatively the same from year to year. We'll, we'll address that here in a minute. The second largest is intergovernmental revenue, is 6 million, or 12 and 1/2% of the 2024 budget, and it's the second-largest source of revenue. They include things like fuel taxes, motor vehicle license, local government funds from the state. Hotel, motel taxes, and beverage and cigarette license are also included in that. The third largest, if you look at the chart, is grant revenue, comprising of 3.6 million, or 7 and 1/2% of the budget. Grant revenue includes $3.5 million in ODOT, Ohio Department of Transportation, grants for six major street infrastructure projects. The makeup of the remaining revenues, you know, is various charges for services, inter-fund transfers, license fees, special assessments, and miscellaneous revenue. All right, this slide here, I wanted to point out, remember back on the pie chart that reflected 61.6% of property taxes? So this is a budget highlight of that. This does not include the police levy, but just to, that just came on, but just to give you a comparison from year to year, this is the levies only, a 24 compared to 23, and it shows you basically the impact of the reappraisal. The impact is that fixed levies, as these are, are not impacted by reappraisal. So people, house appraisals could have went up 50%. It would not impact fixed levies. Fixed levies are not impacted by reappraisals. So as you see, this is why a lot of times levies, we estimate those out usually five years, and then after five years, we're back on asking for a little bit more. This was a good year. We increased 1.44%. That's based on probably new parcels that came on, maybe some increased values because they built additions on or something of that nature. So 1.44% in a good year, so to speak, that shows you that it doesn't even keep up with normal inflation, what it used to be, not, definitely doesn't keep up with now. But just, that's a picture, snapshot to show people that we didn't get the 25% of people's reappraisals of their homes. That did not happen. And this is just all the property taxes. So when you go with the general fund, general fund and the police pension, those are inside millages, which are impacted positively or negatively. They are immediately impacted by reappraisals. And you can see, yes, they went up 23.34%, but when you look at it as a whole for the city, that makes the city property tax increase in, as a whole, 3.42%. And I would like to thank Mr. Casera and Ms. Teresa Hathaway that there was a last-second property tax change from the auditor, and they worked hard to get the slight number changed so that we could have this accurate as possible. All right, moving on, the expenses. So our expenditures by functions, total budget expenditures for 2024 is 49 million, so that's approximately 2.4 million, or 4.7% decrease when compared to '23. Decreases due to the 4.1 million in capital expenditures, which utilize the American Rescue Plan funding that was budgeted in 2023. Street maintenance and capital still remains the largest expenditure, that's 21.65 million, or 44.1%. That was a result of several major infrastructure projects, with a significant portion of the funding coming from grants. Public safety represents the second-largest portion of the budget at approximately 12.94% or 26.4% of the 24 expenditures. This increase with the passage of the 1.8 mil levy, police levy, which included the addition of five new police officers to start in 2024. Special revenue, or fiduciary funds, makes up the next, and it's 3.96 million, or 8.1% in this year's budget, as a result of a 2 million in American Rescue Plan, ARPA, that was rebudgeted to be encumbered, to be completed for the final stormwater major infrastructure project. So we had to rebudget it because it was being delayed to get the specs and all the plans, but hopefully get both of those knocked out in 2024. Expenditures by category, let's see here. There we go. Expenditures by category, wages and benefits account for the largest portion of the budget, which isn't really uncommon. We are a people service industry. Usually, this is a ton higher, but we have a very high level of capital. But personnel is the largest portion of the budget, which accounts for 19.32 million, or 39.4%. The 1.3 million increase over last year's budget is a result of adding five additional new officers, with the passage of the levy and the assistant city manager, along with wage and insurance increases in the city budgeted for in 2024. The second-largest component of the budget is capital, which represents approximately 16.2 million, 33% of the budget. This 2.89 million decrease from last year's budget, again, is a result of the city budgeting 4.1 million in ARPA projects in '23. This 16.2 million does include funds dedicated to a large capital improvement program in 2024, was part of the five-year capital improvement plan. Contractual is the third-largest. If you see the piece of pie up there, that's 8.08 million, or 16.4%, and some of the larger items with this include, like resurfacing of streets and curb repair, inter-fund charges for indirect costs, other professional services like legal fees, prosecution services, liability, property insurance, combined health services, animal control, audit costs, recreational programs, and the Untouched Newsletter. Let me get to some budget highlights. The budget summaries are formatted to ensure the city is dedicating valuable resources to the vision and strategic priorities established by city council. So this year, public safety priority was added to the existing five priorities, which we'll, we'll cover this. Each department tied their goals and objectives to furthering these established city council priorities, and these are all in the budget book. So residents will be able to look at the digital format of the online budget in each fund, under the general fund, under the golf and police parks. Under each fund, they'll be able to see the goals, objectives, and how they tie back to city council's priorities. A total of 11.2 million, shifting gears, 11.2 million in improvement projects are included in the street capital improvement budgets. Of this 4 million, or 35.7%, is funding utilized federal and state grants. Again, we depend on these grants. Projects include North Fairfield Road widening, 2.2 million, North Fairfield Road reconstruction, 1.8 million, Grange Hall widening, 1.35 million, Colonel Glenn resurfacing, 740,000, and Colonel Glenn Highway enhancements, 571,000, and many other smaller projects. The budget includes five additional police officers, as we discussed, as a result of the police levy. An assistant city manager, we also included this under personnel, but was included in the updated staffing management plan, which I'll get to that part here in a minute as well. In addition, several part-time seasonal interns were also included to assist in the efficient operations of the various departments. This budget highlight, this budget does also include 2.8 million for thoroughfare and residential street resurfacing, which unfortunately has been more difficult to get the mileage out of it that we have in the past because of this sharp increase in the last two years of asphalt. But we will continue to do, stretch that dollars as far as we can. The city has adopted approximately 1.9 million for repairs and upgrades to various city facilities. This includes Phase 1 of Sidewalk Program, Ditch Restoration Program, and the funding for a ditch master plan throughout the city. In addition, essential roof repairs have been budgeted for the maintenance facility and city hall. Also, continuation of long-term maintenance programs have been budgeted for the golf course, and this includes continuation of the bunker renovations, cart path resurfacing, and clubhouse repairs. The Vehicle Equipment Replacement Program has returned to normal, budgeted at 2.8 million. This includes additional equipment, replacement of equipment that has been delayed due to funding received through passage of critical levies to the street and police. Now, I will say that, we put them on order and we hope to get them within one to two years. The trucks, the big trucks, the tractors, they are very difficult. If we run past one, we grab it as soon as we can, but there is a delay in what we order. The city will continue its efforts in essential maintenance and capital repairs throughout the city's parks. This includes playground replacement at Walnut Grove, bridge replacement at Stafford Park, and creation of the new asphalt path around Vergalito Park. The city also rebudgeted, as I had mentioned earlier, 2 million in ARPA funds to complete the Willowcrest Stormwater Project, slated for construction in '24 to improve that area of high water and during, you know, bad rain events. Now, a new division entitled Community Enhancement was created. The emphasis on, in 2024 will be the implementation of a Veterans' Banner Program and Phase 1 of the Entryway Enhancement Program. Both will really add, that's why we call it Community Enhancement, a sense of community pride. The Veterans' Banner, sitting right next to Wright Patterson Air Force Base, how do we not have a Veterans' Banner Program? So there's going to be a lot of people wanting to take, there's going to be a fee and so forth, but it'll be down Dayton-Zenia and North Fairfield Road, along those decorated pole lights, and so engineering, you guys will, council's aware, but the residents will start to hear about that early next year. It's an exciting time. Also, new projects for 2024 will be including digitizing some HR and payroll records, that's Phase 1. We have so much records. If you saw the basement here, how much records we have, digitalizing stuff is, that's allowed by law, is the way to go. Facility planning, public engagement project, again, the facilities need help, so some facility planning to allow public engagement will definitely help and assist in this project. So I won't dwell on it too long, but we already covered the five-year capital improvement plan in the budget hearings. It'll be also online, but it is, you know, per the city charter and covers the streets, traffic, building and lands, parks wreck, building bicycle facilities, golf course, and stormwater improvements for the five-year. So that's available, will be available also online. And of course, 2024's capital is included in the budget. This is just per charter, 6.02 of the charter to provide the properties that the city owns. This does not include just road right-of-ways, it'd be a mile long. But this is, you know, the basics of the parks. Nothing has changed since last year, except we named Spring House Park, and I believe last December, we did take ownership, it was pending on this list last year, but the property next to Willowcrest, the stormwater, two properties there, and the properties at 835 and Grange Hall is also listed on this now. They were listed last year, but listed as pending because we were almost ready to close on those properties. Accomplishments, proud to, you know, it's been a long year. You look back and I think about things that happened, and I'm like, did that happen last year? Yeah, that was just in February or March, and I'm thinking like it's been like two years ago. I don't know if that's good or bad on how long the year's been, but it's been a very active year, and there's many things to be proud of. I just want to go through the update, 2023 Updated Staffing Management Plan, what happened with this real quick, because this can't be really, there's not a video for this. But a change was going to be needed due to an external promotion and a unscheduled retirement in two key positions. Very proud of both individuals, very happy for the retirement, very happy for the promotion, very well-deserved. But we were looking at that in succession plan, and in 2025 probably, or '24, and it accelerated the plan. So the city manager presented a plan in '23 of February and was approved by city council in March of '23. Changes include hiring the assistant city manager, and that they were responsible for HR, golf, parks, recreational, and special projects, eliminated the public administrative service director position, but that was then filled, well, part of that was split off by the assistant city manager, and part went to the public service director, which I'll get to. One of the retirement, the retirement was a HR manager, and with knowing what's happening in 2024, with Mr. Casera retiring as the Financial Administrative Services Director, and that will become Finance Director, those shifted some of the experience in HR experience, or HR duties, from finance to under the actual HR director position. So the HR manager became an HR director position. Internal promotion of Public Service Director/City Engineer, Mr. Mormon, we're very glad he was willing to take on those tasks, and he's now responsible for Public Service and Engineering Division. And of course, with all these grants that we get, with engineering, how they just unbelievably, I think it's record year after record year on number of grants, hiring of a new position for Associate City Engineer to help them manage all the projects and grants that they manage. And the last one here before the video, again, the retirement of Financial Administrative Service Director will be next year, and also the retirement of my executive assistant to the city manager. All the positions have been hired successfully. The new members of the management team have fit in very well. I, I can't be more pleased. Human Resource Director, it wasn't, it didn't take her along until she liked the camaraderie and the group up here, and she was down in the fishbowl, what we call it downstairs, and she's like, can I move up? And we said, sure, and so we had to make room for her. Now the whole suite is full. There's not an empty spot anywhere. So she moved up to be part of the team, to be closer, it did help us network a lot easier. And the city has been able to attract great talent and great people that feel called to public service, and that's, that's just a testimony to the city of Beaver Creek. All right, now, make sure all mics are off. We'll show a video, thank Katie Carrico in advance for this wonderful video. So sit back and watch the accomplishments of 2023.
In 2023, the city of Beaver Creek continued its journey toward being a safe, vibrant community dedicated to serving the needs of residents and embracing the opportunities of tomorrow. We are proud to share the city's remarkable achievements throughout 2023 that highlight the city's commitment. the city's commitment to its residents. Beaver Creek's Parks, Recreation, and Culture Division has been a driving force in increasing community engagement. The department proudly hosted eight community events, including the cherished Fourth of July Celebration and the family favorite, Triatrac. Dominic Laffino Park hosted eight concerts as part of our summer concert series, featuring local musicians and two children's concerts. The division also boosted attendance at its recreational programs by introducing 11 new programs and expanding its eight-week summer camp, providing children with more opportunities to explore, learn, and create lasting memories. ADA enhancements at Merrick Park have improved accessibility, ensuring that everyone can enjoy the park. At 148 acres, the city's largest park, Spring House Park, opened to the public this year. After receiving hundreds of submissions from the community, city council chose the name to recognize the park's natural spring and Spring House. Over the past year, brand setter Carol worked with park staff and the community to develop a master plan for the park, to act as a guide for the planning and development of the park land. In August, the community celebrated the opening of Spring House Park, and thanks to the help of dozens of volunteers, the park now features several hiking trails so people can enjoy its beauty. At the Beaver Creek Senior Center, membership soared to more than 2,000 active members, a 33% increase from the previous year. The center facilitated more than 8,000 transportation trips, ensuring seniors stay connected and engaged with the community. The center also hosted 34 events for its members, introduced new recreational programs, and invested in state-of-the-art fitness equipment to promote the health and activity of its members. The Beaver Creek Police Department remains dedicated to serving and protecting the Beaver Creek community. In 2023, the department implemented a comprehensive health and wellness program for its officers. Community engagement remained a priority as the department participated in 72 community events, including Safety Town and National Night Out. The department also welcomed new members to its ranks, including K-9 Officer Mickey, and promoted three officers to sergeants.
A male shooter entered the Walmart.
In the face of adversity, the department demonstrated its unwavering commitment to the community. Responding to a mass shooting at a Beaver Creek business, officers arrived on the scene within three minutes of the first 911 call. Their swift action played a crucial role in protecting lives and assisting victims, showcasing their dedication to public safety. The city's communications manager played a pivotal role in keeping the community informed. Following that mass shooting, they assisted the police department in handling media requests and press conferences for local, state, national, and international media. Throughout 2023, the city appeared in the media more than 100 times, showcasing city projects, services, and programs. To enhance community connection, a digital newsletter was launched, and Beaver Creek TV underwent a redesign to feature more local content, promoting upcoming events and recreation programs. The First Beaver Creek Citizens Academy provided 30 residents with behind-the-scenes access to city programs and services. The city's Engineering Division secured more than $8.4 million in new grant funding from the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. These funds will propel seven major future projects aimed at enhancing city roads and infrastructure. The division awarded construction contracts for seven significant projects, ranging from widening Grange Hall Road to restoring a large ditch along Vineland Trail and the city's 2023 Street Resurfacing and Curve Replacement Program. Additionally, engineering contracts were awarded for five transformative projects, including reconstruction along North Fairfield Road and the bridge on Factory Road. Staff's hard work also resulted in the opening and celebration of McGrath Way, a tribute to Jeff McGrath, who worked in the city's planning department for 19 years. City engineers hosted public involvement meetings for six capital improvement projects, emphasizing the importance of community input and shaping the city's future. Meanwhile, the city's Public Service Division maintained 577 lane miles citywide, responding promptly to 2,000 work orders. The division inspected, repaired, and replaced more than 60 catch basins to prevent flooding and water pollution. For the fifth consecutive year, the city achieved Tree City USA status, and one of its employees became a certified arborist. During the winter months, the division efficiently handled eight snow and ice events, deploying 670 tons of salt strategically. Beaver Creek's Planning and Development Department played a pivotal role in planning and guiding development throughout the city. The department reviewed and approved 790 zoning permits, guided cases through the Planning Commission and City Council, and welcomed 51 businesses moving into existing tenant spaces and eight new commercial construction projects. The department also worked closely with council to become one of the first cities in the nation to pass legislation requiring applicants for zoning permits to certify they are not subject to review by the Committee on Foreign Investment in the United States in an effort to safeguard Wright Patterson Air Force Base and national security. Code enforcement conducted more than 3,700 inspections and organized a neighborhood cleanup, demonstrating the city's commitment to the community's health and safety. The Beaver Creek Golf Club had a record-breaking year, hosting more than 35,000 rounds of golf and over 50 golf outings. This year, the club began a three-phase bunker renovation project, aiming to elevate the golfing experience. During the summer months, dozens gathered for the club's five "Party on the Patio" events, featuring music and food trucks. Additionally, the club hosted two junior golf camps with more than 60 kids each, passing along the love for golf to the next generation. The city's Finance Department continues its legacy of financial excellence, earning the Ohio Auditor of State Award with distinction for the 12th consecutive year. The department implemented a hotel motel tax for short-term rentals and developed balanced budgets with 20% reserves for all departments, ensuring stability for city services. As Beaver Creek strides forward into the future, these 2023 achievements underscore its dedication to creating a safe and vibrant community. With a commitment to safety, engagement, and financial stability, Beaver Creek remains a city that embraces the opportunities of tomorrow.
Just when you think it can't get any better, all right? Good job, Katie. All right, so our, has been, you know, our, you know, the vision statement is, you know, the city of Beaver Creek is a safe, vibrant community dedicated to serving the needs of residents and embracing the opportunities of tomorrow. And those were developed, that was developed along with five strategic priorities initially in July of 2022, but in 2023, we had an additional, we had a strategic council strategy plan, management strategy plan, meeting, and we added a sixth regarding public safety, which I'll address just in a second. We also, the process of goals and objectives were developed based on these strategic priorities. And together with the vision statement and the strategic priorities, they provide a clear direction for staff when making decisions that impact the Beaver Creek community. So just as a quick reminder, I'm not going to go through all of the information on this, but our strategic priorities, diversified and sustainable revenue, engaged and informed community, planned infrastructure, right-sized workforce, and family-friendly parks. And a new one for this year was added was public safety, prevention, education, and support. Build mutual trust and respect through collaboration, information sharing, education, and diligent response to community needs and concerns. With that, some final thoughts, 2024 facility needs for the police and City Hall. As discussed, both buildings may appear fine on the surface, but there's many underlying issues, from size to operational needs, to even the police department being mentioned in their accreditation, year after year, that something needs done with their building. So there's a lot of, a lot of, you know, things that we can look for in 2024, including public comments, public input on this, and that's one issue that we will be addressing. But many challenges for 2024. Park funding is another challenge for 2024. 2024 represents the fifth year of the park levy since its last increase. So as I said, if you remember, our levies are usually five-year cycles. They last five years, then, usually unless you're able to got grant or got something else that can help offset some costs, you're right back with, on the ballot saying, you know, because, you know, the rise of the income, the revenue does not keep up with the rise of inflation. So here we are with the addition of maintenance costs of Spring House Park, which we'll just mow, mow down probably about four times a year and keep the rightaways mowed. And we've got volunteers for the trails and things like that, but some price of some gravel. But other than that, even with just those minimal things, we're in the last year of the park levy that where, you know, decisions will have to be made even just to maintain what we have. And as always, infrastructure projects, this always will be my favorite one. Willowcrest, we hope to get this resolved so this doesn't happen again. This plan will be underway, hopefully, construction begin spring to summertime, and address unfunded backlog of infrastructure is always a challenge. For those that don't know or don't understand, our, like, projects like this cannot be paid for by street levy dollars. This is a one-time funding of the ARPA dollars that we use to utilize on these several projects that we do not have funding for, never have had funding in the 40 years for, but we are dedicating the ARPA funds to these major, major projects. And again, the final documents will be on our website, accomplishments, the budget, this video, the five-year capital, everything will be on as of tomorrow. And I want to thank residents for their commitment to make Beaver Creek a better community by taking an active role in the city and helping us shape the future of our city. And thanks to city council for placing your trust and confidence in me and providing me the opportunity. And thanks to city staff, city of Beaver Creek employees are just awesome. They're great people, doing great things. We have challenges to face, but we fulfill expectations every day, and the staff is, I can't say enough, they're great. So our success is a direct result of the way our departments, leadership, and staff all work collaboratively with the city council and the community to make Beaver Creek a place it is today, and we're very proud of that and very proud of Beaver Creek. And for that, that is the state of the city this year. Any questions or comments?
Well, thank you very much, and, you know, thanks for your leadership, thanks to your staff for all their hard work. In addition to that, thanks to all the volunteers that helped this community every day of the week, and, you know, it's a proud place for us to call home, I know we do up here, and I think most everybody does. So thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thanks, Pete.
All right, thank you.
It went about five minutes too long, but other than that, we won't. You know I had to get that in there. You know I had to get it in there. All right. All right, next are the ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs.
Sorry. Got rid of one too many. Ordinance 23-30, an ordinance rezoning 9.79 acres from R1A, one-family residential and A1 agricultural, further described as Book Four, Page Four, Parcel Seven, and Parcel Thirteen on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to R-PUD 22-4 residential planned unit development.
Thank you. This is the second reading, is there, are there any additions from staff? Any comments or additions from council?
I do have an additional question, Mayor. With the kinder care facility in the back, there's a line of trees, and I don't want to get ahead of myself for it, but do you foresee keeping those just simply because kinder care is right there, it's dealing with our youngest citizens, just protection for their sightline?
Yeah, that's more of a specific site plan type of question, but when we get to that phase, we'll, we'll make sure that there's a separation between the uses because of residents versus non-residential use, we want to make sure there's appropriate screening.
Yeah, forgive me for getting a little far ahead, but I think he was going there. So, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 23-30, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 23-31.
Ordinance 23-31, an ordinance to rezone 1.1 acres from R1A, family residential to A1 agricultural, further described as Book Six, Page 25, Parcels 22, 23, and 24 on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio.
Thank you. Any additional comments from staff? Any comments from council?
Move to approve ordinance 23-32.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-31.
Thirty-one. Correction.
That's the way I heard it.
Thanks, Mayor.
Because I was reading along. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 23-32.
Ordinance 23-32, an ordinance to rezone 2.627 acres from B4 highway business to B3 general business, further described as Book One, Page Two, Part of Parcels 63 on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio.
Thank you. Once again, this is the second reading. Any additional input from staff? Comments from council? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 23-32.
Second.
Thirty-three?
Thirty-two.
Oh, I've scratched that one out already. All right, thank you. See, I was getting that. No, that's not, it's me. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-32. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 23-33.
Ordinance 23-33, an ordinance repealing current personnel rules and regulations for the city of Beaver Creek and adopting new personnel rules and regulations for the city of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. Anything new from staff?
No changes.
This is the second reading. Any comments from council? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 23-33.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-33. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Resolution 23-58.
Resolution 23-58, a resolution accepting the 2024 city budget as presented by the city manager.
Thank you. Any comments? We had a nice overview already tonight, so do I hear a motion?
Move to approve 23-58, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 23-58. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 23-36.
Ordinance 23-36, approving the annual appropriations for the city of Beaver Creek, state of Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024, and authorizing the transfer of monies.
Thank you. Mr. Casera, anything you want to add to this? All right, this isn't the, an ordinance, so at this point, if there's anybody present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move on. Council, anything? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 23-36.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23 dash 36. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Next is resolution 23 dash 60.
Resolution 23 dash 60, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council authorizing an extension of the reemployment agreement, agreement by, by and between the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, and Dwight P. E. Landrum, and approving the addendum to the employment agreement.
Thank you. Mr. McKeer, you have a comment?
Only, just to note for council and for those here tonight, that this is a three-year edition, extension of the contract. There are no other changes other than the dates, obviously, to extend to three years. So from 25 to 28, that is, that's the only change in the agreement. No other changes.
All right, thank you. The, certain members of council, including the mayor-elect, requested we take a look at this extension because of all the upcoming, for one reason anyway, for all the upcoming retirements of department heads, to try to create some continuity and to create a continuity through this next four-year term. And with that, I will just turn it over to the mayor-elect, if he has a comment or two.
Well, just a couple of things. I've had the opportunity to work with Pete for the last four years, and he's, he feels a lot about Beaver Creek the same way I do. I mean, I love this city, and he works hard to, to make it right and provide an opportunity for our citizens. He's hired some really quality people, and he's allowing them to do their jobs, which I think is really great. And I would really like to have the opportunity to work with him through my term for the next four years.
Okay. And with that, we will open it up to comments. Anybody want to make any?
Well, I've been very proud of the manager. I think he's done a good job the time that I've been on council. I realize people have sometimes difference of opinion, Your Honor, on certain things, but I think overall Pete's had the Beaver Creek, the will of Beaver Creek in hand all the time, and I really think he's done a good job.
Anyone else?
I think he's a fantastic asset to the city. I think he works really very, very hard. He's in the office usually by about, by about seven and then continues throughout the day. He's readily available for any of us on city council to get a hold of him. But in particular, I think he has the foresight to see what's coming, and he's kept our city on a very, very good track moving forward. So very thankful for him and his continued leadership in our city.
I will add to that, while I echo all of your points, I'm not 100% sold on now being the right time with Mr. Landrum's contract with two years still remaining. I think it's something that us as council could work on in the next coming year with new addition to council. With that said, Mr. Landrum and I had a very productive face-to-face meeting on Friday where we both discussed the contract extension, and we shared with each other some of our professional opinions, and I really appreciate that, Pete. Thank you very much for that conversation. He has demonstrated dedication and very much professionalism towards the city. He's invested in our city, and really, I do believe dedicated to making our city, city's future much brighter. I have a tremendous respect for the position of city manager and for Pete. It is a critically important role and extremely difficult job. Quite frankly, a job that I'm not sure anyone can do to make everyone completely satisfied, and I, I get that. Over the next year, I really look forward to our continued two-way communication, and I promise to do better at that as well. And I would just like to continue our open discussions, and I would rather reevaluate this mid-year, but am open for more discussion. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
Your Honor, I approve 23 dash 60.
Second.
Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 23 dash 60. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Extentions? Motion carries. Next, liquor license. Chief?
Good evening once again. Before this evening, we have liquor, new liquor permit for the Ohio Springs Incorporated doing business as sheets located at Colonel Glenn Highway and East Side Drive in the city of Beaver Creek. The Ohio Divisional Liquor Control sent us notification for this request for a new C1 and C2 liquor permit for Ohio Springs Incorporated doing business as sheets at that location on Colonel Glenn Highway and East Side Drive. Ohio Springs Incorporated is a large company, so shareholder and personal history background forms were not sent to the police department. There are no concerns for this permit as requested, and staff is recommending the application. Request moved forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to accept without comment.
Next.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Council time. Councilmember Curran, do you want to kick it off?
Well, Your Honor, well, I'll tell you, the party that took place there Thursday night was wham-o, big time. And it was very, really neat, both to see the special honors that you received, Mayor, as well as to see everybody getting sworn in, and it was just a great, great evening. I wanted to say a few things to you, Mayor. First of all, I think it's been, to me, a high privilege and a distinct honor to serve with you over these last several years, both on planning commission as well as your role in mayor on city council. I think you exhibit the three Cs, as I like to say. Number one, you work towards consensus. It's very hard, people have different opinions, but Mayor, the value you have and importance you have used to try to weave together everybody and get them to try to get some kind of common direction is really something that I think is, needs to be pointed out. Number two, the second C I'd say is commitment to community. Whether it happens to be young people.
You know, there's two Cs there, commitment, community.
Yeah, you're right. I should have said four.
Charles Curran.
Too much time out, Your Honor. That's what it was. But, you know, whether it be Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, teaching them about democracy and government by actually having them come here and play the role, or whether it's working with veterans, or whether it's working with senior citizens, you've done all those things, and in my opinion, high marks all the way. And the last one I'd mention is, is a commitment to regionalism, that you want to have Beaver Creek at the table, whether it happens to be mayors and managers, Wright Patterson Air Force Base, Ohio Mayors Conference, you spoke up each time to try to present the best face. And I wish you all the best in terms of future endeavors, Your Honor. It's been a, been a great experience. Thank you.
Well, Charles, it's been a great pleasure to work with you. You are the consummate, consummate citizen advocate. I mean, you just are, and not to mention, you keep the laughter here going. Thank you, Charles.
You are.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to echo Councilmember Curran's words. The first Thursday and the last first Thursday under your tenure was fabulous. It was such an extraordinary event, and I am very excited for the next year to come, but you will be duly missed. I would also like to say a few words in terms of your belief in me. I, you sat down with me when I decided that I wanted to sit on city council, and you supported me, and you helped guide me, and you provided mentorship, and for that, I am incredibly thankful. And to echo the words of Councilmember Curran, you've always kept this community at the center of your forefront, and so we just can't thank you enough, and you're going to be very missed. I do have one update that I'd like to provide. I know that I mentioned at the last meeting, I was going to a Region 14 meeting on the opioid epidemic, and we had intended on having a four-hour summit to try and hash out some of our criteria, some of our priorities. Unfortunately, prior to that meeting, the state leadership and the One Ohio Regional Committee had decided that they would like to potentially reevaluate some of their decisions that were made initially. And some of that decision-making involves a more centralized grant application process, centralizing the submission of projects. Prior to that, we were supposed to have projects that went straight to our region. You could apply straight to the region that you were interested in now that they're going to be statewide. And the state is now looking to do a review and scoring process. And when I say the state, I mean One Ohio Board is going to do that, but it's going to be statewide. And they are taking input from the regions. This is all up for consideration at the moment. There is not anything that has been set in stone, but it has taken a lot of control away from the regions that we initially anticipated that we would be having. So in that same vein, the committee decided to, or the board decided to submit a letter to the One Ohio Board expressing our displeasure with the relinquishment of some of our control. And we also had asked for some very definitive timelines on when this funding is going to become available, when the grant applications are going to become available, because our region, for lack of better words, it is suffering because of this crisis. And so in order to help thwart some of these efforts and, or some of these problems, we'd like to get that in place sooner rather than later. So the board meets tomorrow, the One Ohio Board, at the state level, and so hopefully we will have a little more insight and direction, but just wanted to update everyone here. And with that, since this is our last meeting of the year, I want to wish everyone a very safe and happy holiday season and a happy new year, and I am incredibly excited to come back here in the new year with many of the same faces. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. Councilmember Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to talk about some employee anniversaries. I'll do that first, if you're ready. Mr. Manager? Excellent. December, we celebrate six anniversaries for employees. Our very own city manager, Pete Landrum, celebrating seven years, and we're going to make it another five great ones. In golf, we've got Laura Mio celebrating six years, Steve Bergman, Parks and Rec, 12 years, Joel Sora in police, five years, Andy Delaney in public service, 11 years, and Melissa Gillah in planning and development, 20 years. That's wonderful.
Mm-hmm.
I'd also like to welcome our new officers, who, one year from now, maybe I'll, I'll call their names, Officers Allers and Officer Zalar. I'd also like to thank the chief and his amazing team for continually attracting the talent that you have been. Thank you for that, and we look forward to those new additions to the force that will be out there protecting us. I want to thank the citizens that attended our budget workshops and provided us input because that budget process is a cumbersome one, and there's a lot of things to consider, and, and all the input that you've given is really appreciated, so thank you. The mayor and I got to meet with Scout PAC 234 right here at City Hall. We had a fantastic, lively debate with seven or eight scouts. We talked about several different local government issues, and the scouts got to play the role of city manager, city council, and mayor. And I thought it was really neat to give them a glimpse of our legislative process and, and listen to all of the debate that they had, so.
And they elected their own mayor.
They did. That's right, exactly. And, and Mayor, you're, you're so good at facilitating that group of kids, and that's wonderful. Last week, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Appreciation Lunch. I want to thank Wendy and Chris for recognizing the city and for their ongoing partnership with us. I attended the Republican Women's Annual Christmas Dinner, where we heard from several local elected officials and also U.S. Senate candidate Bernie Moreno. It was an interesting discussion and talk. I too want to thank the mayor for a wonderful first Thursday event at the Hilton Garden Inn. I want to thank the Hilton Garden Inn for hosting the swearing-in last week. There was such a tremendous outpouring of support at that event, which really reiterates to me what an amazing community we've got and all the people that, that really care so much about it. And last, but certainly not least, I want to thank you, Mayor Bob Stone, for your unwavering dedication to Beaver Creek. I couldn't have asked for a better role model for diplomacy in the position. I think you've heard several times tonight, you have led with grace, with knowledge, with an even temperament, with history, and with passion for the position, because I know you just simply love the community. It has been a pleasure to serve with you. I'm honored to call you mayor, and I'm really moreover honored to call you a friend, and I look forward to your next chapter, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Councilmember Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, safe season. Like to thank and congratulate Officers Zalarz and Officer Zalar, a hearty welcome to the Beaver Creek Police Department, and in particular, for the College to Law Enforcement Program, now our second candidate, so that has been excellent. I'd like to congratulate and to thank Dr. Patrick Oliver, the Director of Criminal Justice Program at Cedarville University, for that ongoing connection and the way it's benefited our city. Took on a new role as a, in volunteering in the community, so believe it or not, I am a Lego League's robotics assistant coach on one of the teams. That's been a lot of fun, and it's hard to believe because, you know, all the years I've been building Legos, and now it's useful to the wider community. That's an awful lot of fun. To echo another sentiment, the first Thursday event was wonderful. Major thanks to the Hilton Garden Inn, and just an amazing turnout among the community there. Very thankful. And finally, Mayor, really thankful for your leadership. When I first met you in 2013 on the Charter Review Committee, you instantly struck me as someone with a tremendous amount of wisdom, and I've watched and followed you for over a decade now, and it never ceases to amaze me what you see that others don't see, even on a simple site plan or just a document. You, you bring something to council that just exudes experience, that someone that's been there, done that. I love the way Councilmember Bales put it, just the level-headedness. And I've watched you very closely and in my own management style as I've been brought on to take on new positions, I've, I've learned a lot, and I've adopted a lot of that as well. I wish you all the very best. Thankful to Margaret as well for loaning us, you to us for so long, but I'm very thankful for you both. You mean a lot to me. I want to call you with some frequency because you have a historical memory of this community. And, you know, whether it's a text message or something, but there are just places where I'd love to continue picking your brain, and so congratulations on, on your tenure as mayor, eight wonderful years, and I'm very thankful and proud that you have led our community.
Well, Glenn, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor-elect.
I, this last couple of weeks has been a little tough for me because my wife's been in and out of hospital, but I was able to attend a few things. I was able to attend the sensory Santa Experience at the mall, and for special needs kids, that was, was an interesting experience, seeing these kids come in and be able to sit with Santa Claus and not have to worry about all the extraneous noise that goes on, but they had pause for ability there with the dogs, and they were, they were just fun to watch. I was able to attend the swearing-in of the two newest officers, Travis Zalarz and Olivia Zalar. Welcome, Beaver Creek. I'm, I'm sure that they will be a great addition to our I'm sure that they will be a great addition to our police department. There's an activity that I've done for the last seven years. I've been able to take photos of the kids with Santa Claus at the Violence Free Futures or Family Violence Prevention Center, and I look forward to that. All, my sister, my daughter and I have done that together. It's one of the two things that we can do together, and she just loves going out there. And just being able to take the photos, print the photos, put them in a frame and give them to them to help make their Christmas a little bit more normal just makes it all worthwhile, so I really appreciate doing that. First Thursday, can't say enough about that. That was just a, it was an amazing event. I don't think I've seen that many people in that one room like that for a long time, so it's really nice to see all of that. Yesterday, I was able to go to help out at the holiday lunch at the Ohio Air National Guard Armory. This is put on by the Blue Star families, and I was able to serve some food, and I got to meet the Grinch and Santa Claus, so that was kind of interesting, so that was, that was a lot of fun. And I want to wish everyone a great holiday and safe, happy, and prosperous new year. And Mayor, I just, it's been an interesting, almost five years, isn't it, don't you? And I've learned a lot. You've been a good mentor. You corrected me quite sternly sometimes on some things where I messed up, but I appreciate it because we all struggle to learn once in a while, so. But I think it has made me better at being able to do this job, and I look forward to being able to move into your seat and hopefully fill it at least partially as well as you did.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Don. And you can bring your chair over here when you say the next term. All right, Mayor's Report. Well, I'm not going to get into a whole lot, but it's been a wonderful eight years. Thank you all for your comments. I mean, they're very appreciative. But as far as things that happened here recently, again, I want to thank Hilton Garden Inn, and I hope that you will continue that kind of a tradition that we've created for every two years, that the new council members would be sworn in at the Hilton Garden Inn at a function similar to what we just had. It seems to be appreciated by all the family members, all the relatives and the guests, and it's just a great place to be able to have something versus a fairly sanitary swearing-in here at City Hall. So hopefully that'll continue. This is the 11th day of December, so I've still got 20 days. We've still got a couple ribbon cuttings on the calendar. We've got the Greater Dayton Mayor's and Managers Dinner coming up Wednesday. Don and I are going up to Columbus later this week to the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, and so my work's not quite finished. I may not sit in this chair again this year, but the work's not done, and I'll work till the 31st, midnight on the 31st. It's, uh, if there's a need, I'll be doing it. We talked about some of the new police officers that we introduced today. It's been my privilege to have sworn in somewhere around 30 new officers over the eight years. We have a, you know, the force is a little, getting a little on the younger side, and I don't normally feel old until I see these two, these young officers coming up. I say, hmm, all right. But, you know, it's been a pleasure, not just with council, but it's been a pleasure with staff. Pete is, Pete's been my guardian. Whenever we go to D.C. or wherever we go, Pete looks out for me. He even volun, he was even going to carry my luggage one time when my back wasn't, so it's bothering me at the airport. I mean, he's, uh, he has my back, and Don, he'll have yours as well. So this staff has just all been great. Everybody's been great. You know, and I got all the accolades tonight, but I don't do anything. I just try to help other people get things done, and so it's not, it's not me, it's, but I appreciate it anyway. It, this community, this staff, and this council, it's good. City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll have comments here in a little bit. But tonight, a quick couple of little things because Christmas is right around. So winter welcome at Wardinger Park. That is this Friday, this Friday at 5:00 P.M., 5:00 to 8:00. So, you know, we've got a lot going on there. The cabins are decorated, the lights are on. Enjoy cookies, hot cocoa, carolers, stroll through the park, admire beauty. I think they're, still have the reindeer, so there's a lot going on. There's going to be a couple food trucks for options for food, so come out, Wardinger Park, this Friday, 5:00 to 8:00. And again, all this month of December through January 1st, the lights are on at the park at night, and there's a little QR code you can vote on which is the best decorated cabin. You've got the Optimist, the Historical Society, I think the library, and Kiwanis. I got them all. Last time's a charm. They all volunteer, and they'll be staffing each of the cabins, and they've decorated and done a lot of hard work, so, you know, have a look at those, you'll enjoy it. And Santa Claus is going to be on the phone. We did this last year through our Access Channel 5. If you don't have Access Channel 5, you can stream it on our website under livestream under our website. Santa Claus will be taking phone calls from children all on the live TV, December 16th, 6:00 to 9:00 P.M., and there'll be a phone number that you can dial in to call that will be displayed on that. So a great opportunity. I think a lot of kids had a lot of good time last year. I kind of listened to some of it, and it just makes you laugh and smile. That's, what more is there, right? The laughter of a kid or the joy of a child, nothing better. And holiday closings, last time I can announce that for this year, December 25th and 26th, that's a Monday and a Tuesday, and January 1st as well. And as always, for non-emergencies, contact the Beaver Creek Police Department, 426-1225. And Mayor, I'm going to take a little liberty to give the rest of my time to Mayor-elect Don Adams, please.
Mr. Mayor, if you would, join me down front.
You're in trouble.
As we've heard tonight, as we've heard tonight, this is Bob's last meeting. I know he still has 20 days left, but this is the last opportunity we have to really recognize him. And after serving 20 years with the city of Beaver Creek in several different capacities, the last eight as mayor, we really need to recognize him. So, but the first person I want to call up here is Chief Fiorita because he has something for you. Margaret, would you like to come up here?
Come on up.
Come on up.
Please, Margaret. Mr. Mayor, it's been an honor and privilege being able to work with you. I believe you started out in the city maybe back in 1998 in some shape or capacity, so during my entire career and a little bit more. Had the privilege to work with you, sir, and I appreciate that. On behalf of the Beaver Creek Police Department, we have a certificate of appreciation presented to Mayor Bob Stone. I am honored to present you with this certificate of appreciation for your years of dedicated service to the city of Beaver Creek, the Beaver Creek Police Department, and to the citizens of Beaver Creek. During your tenure as mayor, your servant style of leadership was consistently displayed in your decisions and actions to always place others before yourself. As the city's first directly elected mayor, you steadfastly guided us through two different states of emergency while always keeping the well-being of our citizens at the forefront of your decisions. As a tenured member of the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, Mayor's and Chiefs Leadership Committee, you have provided guidance and support, not only for the Beaver Creek Police Department, but for all law enforcement agencies in the state of Ohio. On behalf of myself and the men and women of the Beaver Creek Police Department, we thank you for your years of distinguished service. We will always consider you a friend and advocate, and we wish you well in your future endeavors. Given this day, December 11th, 2023, Jeffrey M. Fiorita, Chief of Police.
Chief, thank you very much, and it's, it's quite an honor. It really is, and it's been an honor to serve with you, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Margaret?
Thank you.
All right, the city of Beaver Creek would also like to give you an award, so I'll ask City Manager Pete Landrum.
All right, Mr. Mayor. There, there's a gavel you can take with you. I think she may use it on you more than you, you'll use it on her, but it reads, "City of Beaver Creek recognizes Bob R. Stone in appreciation of his eight years of loyal and dedicated public service to the Beaver Creek community as the city's first directly elected and longest-serving mayor. City of Beaver Creek Mayor 2016 through 2023." So give that to you. And I, I have to also say some of the things, you know, I've, mayor for seven year, you've been mayor seven years of my seven-year service, so I started December 1st of 2016, and you just took office January 1st of 16. And it would be hard to even imagine the last seven years with anybody else. He was very gracious on the new city manager, guiding me, you know, the history, you're, you're absolutely right, the history of Beaver Creek, why this is the way it is, how this got to be how this, this is. And Margaret there, every inch, every, every dinner, every meal that went to gracious opening your home to us, a good cook, I've, need to lose weight here, but, you know, it was just fantastic getting to know her as well. And I know my wife, on behalf of my wife, and, and, you know, wishes you guys, of course, the very best, but, you know, there's a brighter future, absolutely. But, you know, this award is definitely from the city of Beaver Creek, all the department heads, and the city as a whole just honor you tonight and thank you for your wonderful service, and it'll be something I never forget, and I know, I count you as, been said, as a friend, and the number is always there for a call. Mr. Mayor.
Well, you, thanks, Pete, and I really do appreciate this very much, and it's been, it really has been a pleasure. I've said it upfront a minute ago. We've looked out for each other for seven years, and it's been a good partnership, and, you know, you say there are better things to come. I don't know that there are better things to come. Other things will come, but this experience, the last eight years of the city, is going to be awfully, awful hard to ever beat, and so thank you very much.
Now I'd like to ask City Council to come in and join us. I noticed he named his walker.
Move on down.
Yeah, come on down. Yeah, yeah. All right, I wanted all of City Council down here because we're all, we've been working with Bob now for the last four years, some of us a little bit longer, and I know we all respect what he's done for our city. I know we're saying this is the end at this point, but it's really not because he's got more things he needs to do before he's done. But we did put together a proclamation for him from the city of Beaver Creek, and I'd like to read that now. It says, "Whereas Mayor Bob Stone exemplifies the requirement of this award, which are service to others, honesty, sincerity, integrity, and benevolence, and whereas Bob grew up in Beaver Creek and attended Wright State University before serving his country in Vietnam, during his military service, he received numerous awards, including the Bronze Star for meritorious achievement in ground operations against hostile forces. Bob continued his career with his Montgomery County Health Department before starting his own business, which he operated for 36 years. And whereas Bob has been a very act, been very active in the community, serving on several boards and committees, including Epilepsy Foundation, Beaver Creek Enrichment Association, Veterans Memorial Committee, Chamber of Commerce, Ethics Board for the Green County Bar Association, Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, Council Township Trustee, and he was inducted in the 2022 Ohio Veterans Hall of Fame and the 2023 Green County Veterans Hall of Fame. Whereas Bob Stone will serve by wrapping up his eighth year as first direct-elect Mayor of Beaver Creek, and whereas Mayor Bob Stone was awarded the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce 2023 E.G. Shaw Lifetime Achievement Award, now therefore, I, Don Adams, Mayor-elect of the city of Beaver Creek, along with the entire city council, congratulate and commend Mayor Bob Stone for his continued commitment and dedication to the advancement and betterment of the city of Beaver Creek."
Thank you. The, now I've got the mic, we're in trouble. You know, thanks, Don, for that, and thanks to council, but it, uh, and thank you. All right, I can't do it without you. And we're, we're going to have some fun. I mean, we're going to move forward, get through the holidays and have a good time, and then there's a new year and a new avenue, new experience, and a new mayor. So thanks to all of you for putting up with me, and thanks for your recognition tonight. I do appreciate it very much. And once again, thanks to all the staff. It's really fantastic. All right, are we done?
We need to go back up there.
Oh, we need to go back. All right, is the city manager's report finished now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. In that case, next on the agenda is citizen comment. Of course, anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any issue, please come forward. Anyone? Seeing none, we will move on to the agenda, and before I make, accept a motion to adjourn, I'm going to pass the gavel and let Don wrap it once the motion's been approved. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have to adjourn, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
There we go.